All right. Hello, everybody, and welcome. This is our Tuesday special meeting of the Mason County Commission. This is the time we come up on our fifth Tuesday to say hello up in Belfair in the North Mason area. It is not an official meeting, please understand that, but it is a meeting where we have an opportunity to listen to the folks from the north end and for us to bring information to you. With that being said, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting order, and we'll go into the Pledge of Allegiance. Vicki Bockus, would you please do us the honor of lateness from the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is, we're going to move on to item number three, which is our open forum for citizens' input. This is your opportunity to speak to the commission on any item at all, preferably it's not on the agenda. In our regular meetings, it's not allowed if it's on our agenda, but today it's a special meeting. But if it's on our agenda, we hope you be, well, actually, there's no need. Just do everything today in the open forum because you're not going to be voting on anything as it is anyway. So now is your opportunity to bring anything you'd like to us. Please raise your hand, be recognized. We'll ask you to come to the podium and to speak to the commission. Is there anybody in the building who would like to speak to the commission? Yes, please. Commissioner?
My name's Dave Haugen, Duado area. I spoke with you in early May, on the ninth, at your meeting regarding a letter that DNR had presented you asking for your, to respond to their Duado Natural Resource Conservation Area Plan. I asked you to respond by asking DNR to put the plan on hold until there was significant public input into the planning process. I wondered if you had made any decisions as far as responding to this plan?
Commissioner Drexel would like to.
So I'm doing, I was tasked by the other two commissioners to go ahead and do some of the research into the plan. And it's more of right now, the immediate thing ahead of us is that they're putting an application into the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Plan, WWRP, through the salmon, the salmon enhancement program. And so I've got a whole series of questions, and I spoke to somebody at the higher level, and then he had to defer me down to somebody at a lower level. And I've got a lot of questions in about public access, about, basically, and I'm doing the research about how much tax revenues we lose by taking this off the tax rolls because that's a very big concern to us.
Would you guys, you can have a map like this?
Yes, yes. And I've got.
Kevin?
So those are the questions I had, and because I was trying to ascertain from the testimonies we heard that evening what specifically you all want. But one of the things that they, I was told was there is a public meeting scheduled. He didn't know at the time. I've got that question. I understand, you know.
He does.
I'm in contact with Katie Woolsey from DNR. She reserved our Port Duado building on June 12th at six to eight for informational meeting.
No, it's, it's, well.
Then there was going to be possibly another meeting in a couple weeks later in June, possibly at the library in Belfair as a hearing. This is all that I've heard so far. I've asked at the time of making reservations two weeks ago, she, we were to be sent more information to be posted to the public regarding the meeting, and we haven't received, there's nothing been forthcoming from DNR about it. Basically, the only way we would, anybody knows about this is my friend saw on your, on the county, the commissioner's agenda, the pack, the letter and package that was sent from DNR regarding their plan proposal.
Okay. Well, Mr. Haugen, I would, or Commissioner Haugen, I would highly encourage, if you know the date, the time of those meeting, that meeting, I don't know it yet.
Right.
But if you do know it, I was told that meeting will be used to gather the input regarding the type of access and the type of use of the property because they're individual, they're not a cutty cook, cookie cutter across the board across the state. And so those are the opportunities to determine how, what kind of low-impact public access will be involved. And it's, it seems to be very, very specific to the areas across the state.
This plan must have been worked through their back offices for months and months, if not years. And I have not seen the details of their plan, but I would guess that this plan's probably about that thick, and it probably has those things already in there, and they're probably not going to be subject to change. But see, these are things nobody knows.
And that's why I'm telling you this.
They haven't told us anything. This, this all goes into their ROC, wherever, meeting decisions in early July?
We have, we have three different opportunities as a public and as a commission to comment on this. One is right now. One is when it goes to the Recreation and Conservation Office for review and ranking.
Right.
And number three, if it's ranked high enough for funding by the legislature, then it's your legislators. So we have three different opportunities.
This is okay. I mean, I've been writing to the Board of Natural Resources and, well, we, this is, you know, we saw this letter to the commissioners and about the plan being proposed. It sounded like they're going to be getting funding, somebody's going to be getting funding for something after July.
They're applying for grant. It's a very competitive grant process, and they're applying for it. This is the way the system works. They apply for it. It goes to the, what's called the RCO Board. They rank them and score them, and then they're in a prior, ranked process, and then they go to the state legislature and ask them to fund them. And then whatever programs get funded, it's where the cutoff is on the fun, the funding. So if the first five ask for $5 million each.
This will be passed through the legislature, you're saying?
At the capital budget.
At the capital budget.
Yeah.
And Commissioner, I heard what you said, and I put that meeting into my calendar, and I will be attending as well to be able to help you to get your communication.
That's good. We haven't, like I said, I've made the reservation for the building, but we were to be hearing back from them. I just, you know, if you look at that map, you'll see that encompasses a large area. There's millions of dollars' worth of taxable real estate in there now that's going to be, would be taken off the rolls if they get everything they want. So I mean, that's just one thing to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who else would like to speak? Herb, please step up.
I have to write down a scorecard here since I don't go to the meetings down there very often. Delimited site problem on State Route Three coming out of Hard Rock Road and Roselle Road. I encourage you guys, we had, DOT did come down and talk to us, and they gave us a reply. They're not doing anything. They met all their, their design standards, and everything is set. We're still arguing that point with them. They're not responding anymore. I urge you after the meeting, if you drive a non-SUV, you know, a low-cut vehicle, go down there and drive and make a left turn out of those two spots and see how well you can see. And then imagine, I work Friday afternoons for the sheriff, imagine on a Friday afternoon with all that traffic trying to make a left turn out of there. It's next to impossible. It was easy, just as easy before, or just as hard before.
Hey, Herb, on that, just to let you know, I went down and I, now, what's Hard Rock Road? I don't know.
That's the one, the one to the, where the sheriff is, that plaza?
Oh.
The Barley's Plaza.
Okay. I did, no, it was, they gave it a name, okay.
That's what's on the map.
All right, but the other one, I did go and I did look at that one, and I got ahold of the state and realized the situation that we have there. What I did is reached out to our Public Works Department because we're looking at seeing what options we have as a county to have some type of communication with the PUD, not with them, in moving that pole or moving that pole. That pole being where it is, is where the real blind spot is on Roselle Road.
Yep, that makes it double hard.
It's not the fence. Yeah, it's not the fence, but that, that pole's an extra big one, and it blocks everything off. But I did not get a chance to go down Hard Rock Road. I'll pull into the sheriff's office and take a look coming out of there.
Yeah. And John Barley has the problem with, with the steepness of the hill. It didn't used to be that steep. They were supposed to bring it way out, make it wide, 40-foot wide is 32-foot wide, and they made it the same length of the hill. They just went out this way and then dropped it off faster.
Okay, thank you.
So in a stick shift, you've got a real problem making it up there. Okay, next item. I don't really support the, that surplusing of the public land, of the county land next, next to the Public Works Center. I think you guys ought to think hard about that. Once you, once you get rid of land, you'll never get it back. That's a big piece of land for future, future county use. Originally, it was planned on being the fairgrounds, which we don't have funding for. I fully understand that. Next item, Mason County Amateur Radio Emergency Services Club is going to be holding Field Day on June 23rd from 11:00 a.m. That's, that's a Friday till, I'll, I'll take that back. Thirty, I got my dates. Let's see. Yeah, it's June 23rd, which is a Saturday to, from 11:00 a.m. to Sunday, the 24th, at 11:00 a.m. It's a 24-hour deal. I encourage the commissioners to come visit anytime during that time. The club gets extra points for public officials that show up, and it's open to the public to show them what emergency communications is all about. It's, it's behind the Bent Vine Brewery and that big field out there. So the club will be set up. Hopefully, you can all cycle through there sometime during the day. As far as the, the DNR item that just came up, I didn't have that on my list, but I just wrote it down. The fire department with Belfer State Park makes an arrangement with them, since Belfer State Park doesn't pay taxes, they do make an annual payment to the fire department for providing services to the park. Now, when you're purchasing, DNR's purchasing private homes that are being ripped down, big tax loss to the county, I would encourage you, go explore that situation with them, see if they can make you an annual in lieu of taxes payment, since they don't pay taxes either. You know, it makes sense to me that they may be able to swing that or not. If you don't ask, you can't get it. So, and I will try to attend those meetings.
I put the other one in the calendar for the amateur radio, and I was open at that time, so I'll try to be there also.
Okay, appreciate that. Thanks.
Just on the ham radio, emergency radio operators, I had a chance to go to that last year, and it was very interesting, not necessarily a radio expert by any means, or even a novice for that matter, but it was really interesting to see their, their operation and how critical they are to the county in emergency situations. And, you know, they're really the, the ears and mouthpiece for us when, when things go sideways. And so Herb is, and they, they do get points. It's one of the rare occasions where people benefit from having elected officials show up, but certainly encourage you to check it out if you can.
Thank you. Did you have, yes, please, Mr. Bester.
I wanted to talk about.
Yes, anything you want to talk about, it's all up to you. We're not going to vote, so you go ahead and speak now.
Okay.
I've been following the public benefit rating system pretty closely, and last September, when it was on the comprehensive plan update, I was the only member of the public that testified and asked that the people that might be affected become notified. And Mr. Wyndham sent out letters to all those 300 parcel owners, and that was good. Quite a number of folks came to the last PAC meeting and expressed some concerns. The meeting went over four hours and was continued till next month. I pointed out at the meeting last week that the guest column that Chairman Thomas wrote had some misinformation in it. And they discussed it, perhaps one of the biggest, two of the things that was really misinformation was the Open Space Taxation Act was adopted in 1970. The public benefit rating system, according to Mr. Thomas, was never used in Mason County, even though it was adopted in 1970. Public benefit rating system didn't get into the Open Space Taxation Act till 1983. So that is a little bit of misinformation. The other thing that was most concerning to me was that the open space, folks in open space get a 95% tax deduction. That's not true. I have property in open space that is far less than 95%. That, I think, applies more to the timber companies, which 99% of the property in the county that is receiving a tax break is timberland. There's less than 2,000 acres that get a tax break that are in open space, open space. I've looked through the, the draft, and I did see one change that is welcome. At one point, anything under five acres couldn't be allowed. They have changed that now, and it's anything under one acre. But Mason County's draft ordinance is more restrictive than King County or Kitsap Counties. So I'd really encourage you, when it comes before you, to take a closer look at whether you want to approve that or not, because it's, it's, if people don't get some kind of break, we're going to lose all kinds of lands. And you folks seem to be focused on public access for open space lands. That's not what open space is all about. It's about protecting rural agricultural lands, soil conservation, critical aquifer recharge areas, and a whole slew of things. So please take your time with this and, and do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Thank you. I'm here to talk about PBRS, but I do want to go on to something that was mentioned earlier. My name is Lori Eddings. My mailing address is PO Box 2074, Belfair, Washington. Commissioner Haugen was talking about the Conservation District that's being proposed in Duado Bay, and I had some comments. First of all, this is supposed to be about protection and preservation of critical areas along our shorelines. That's how it was presented to some of us down there in the local area. So when you, Commissioner, talked about it being about low-impact public access, alarm bells went off in my head, and I'm concerned as to why you would have said that when it's supposed to be about protection for critical areas. Second of all, you made comments about how they're applying for a grant. I need to question why you, as the commissioners, are not representing your taxpayers of Mason County and actively being involved in this process, because as I understand it, this district hasn't been approved or actually adopted yet, and yet they're applying for grants to purchase lands. As commissioners, I urge you to represent the taxpayers of this county and not stay, stay silent while the state of Washington is going behind your backs, because that's the way it seems. So, that's with that. Now, to your public benefit rating system. PBRS, Public Benefit Rating System, in theory, is a very good thing. I know firsthand because I was involved in the creation of PBRS in King County in the early '90s. It is wonderful. But commissioners, I urge you to listen to what I have to say about some potential flaws and pitfalls you could be facing. If PBRS is done right, PBRS helps private landowners support the greater good through the protection of sensitive areas, critical areas, water recharge areas, fish and wildlife enhancement areas, and last but not least, it is supposed to help protect farms and forests. Up until this current draft, I thought that was a part of it. It seems like that item has been stricken. I urge you to revisit that, because even under state law, natural resource areas, farming and forestry, are a priority and need to be preserved no matter where they are. For you to strike that from this causes me serious concern. All of these areas are extremely critical, and they're important, and they are noble and worthwhile areas that need protection. I'm sure everyone in this room and in this county will agree with that, and I applaud you for going down this path because it has great potential. But this protection comes from caring and concerned private landowners who may be willing to give up some of their land use rights in exchange for tax credits that, in return, will encumber those person, personal property rights, but will protect and preserve critical and sensitive areas. It truly can be a win-win for the county and for the citizens and the private property owners involved. There is, however, a potential problem, and it's big, and it needs to be addressed now. Your most important credit is for private landowners who wish to protect their said critical and sensitive areas need to provide or should provide public access to those lands. As commissioners, you need to move with caution on this public-private access issue. If a private landowner allows the public to use encumbered private lands, can the public, can Mason County or the state of Washington come back five, 10, 15, or even 60 years later and say that those encumbered private lands are now public lands, either through condemnation, eminent domain, or adverse possession? You need to think long and hard about what kind of public access you attach to encumbered critical areas. It's a high priority, and it's a critical issue that you, the commissioners, need to address now before you adopt your PBRS program. This is about the protection of critical and sensitive areas, or it could become a takings of private lands. It's a key fundamental question that you, the commissioners, need to address before this adoption is completed. I want to give kudos to you and your idea for protecting our, our public lands, but if it's truly an indirect and subtle taking, just acknowledge it now. Let us know. We, the citizens of Mason County, need to know today if your goal is about protection and preservation, or is it about the long run and of taking private lands. Some in this county can say, and they should say, that this is socialism, and that's not acceptable in Mason County, it's not acceptable in the state of Washington, and it's certainly not acceptable in the United States of America. So just let us know now what your expectations and goals are by having such a high priority for public access to private lands when landowners just want to help you preserve our most critical and sensitive areas in the state. Your PBS program hinges on your, your being honest forthright and giving clarity to this now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Mr. Thomas?
My name is James Thomas. I am the chairman of the Planning Advisory Commission that's been working on the PBRS. I'd like to correct a misconception that public access is the focus of the PBRS.
Please, address us only, please. Address us only, please.
Yes, it certainly, it certainly is not the case as the PAC has been working on it. We recognize that there are a number of legal problems associated with, with public access on private land. The, the county certainly is not going to indemnify private landowners for injuries, and there are costs associated with insurance to protect landowners against that. So we are being very cautious about how we, how we recommend that public access be folded into this. In fact, there are quite a number of situations where, where public access is at odds with the greater purpose of maintaining those open spaces in some recharge areas and wetlands and what have you. So the PBRS is not a finished project. We will be wrapping it up at the next month's meeting, and I would, I would encourage everyone to wait until they see the final package before they get concerned.
How long you've been working on it, Mr. Thomas?
It seems like most of my adult life, I guess about four or five months now.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Yes, well, Herb, you already spoke.
I know. See if I can make one more comment.
Come on up.
I just wrote that note down as I was speaking. As far as open spaces and tax deductions, Webb Hill, that's Kirk Company Timberland. It's Texas Timberland. It's a commercial business up there. They're being paid, I think, $99,000 a year for use of their property. How much taxes is the county getting out of this? Probably nothing. Something for, for you to go look at. Also, the Hood Canal Improvement Club in Union, speaking to you, Kevin, they're going to hold another meeting on next Tu, on Tuesday, the 5th, at 5:30, it starts at 5:30, and they're going to have a discussion on Webb Hill again. I think the Webb Hill owners are coming in to speak also. So it may be worthwhile for, for one or two of you at least to attend that meeting.
What is the date on that, sir?
That is the 5th of June. The gathering starts at 5:30. The official meeting starts at 6:00.
Is it still made at the church or the fire hall?
It's at the fire hall.
Thank you.
And I'll be there.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Hearing none, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is our Belfair Mobility input from the community and also to tell you a little bit about what's going on there. Dave, would you mind introducing that?
Dave Smith, Mason County Department of Public Works. Thank you, commissioners. This evening, we have Thera Block from SCJ and Associates, who's been diligently working on that mobility plan, and she's going to give an update on where she's at. And I think, believe she's also going to talk about briefly the origin destination study. And I heard from her that the draft of the plan is forthcoming. We should be having it very soon. So with that, I'll turn it over to Thera.
Thank you, Dave.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you so much for this opportunity to talk with you this evening. I can't think of a better place to be talking about the Belfair Mobility Plan than here in Belfair.
If you don't mind, you can actually turn yours, because you can speak to everybody.
Okay, okay, good. I was actually like, okay, I got it, I cannot, so I'm going to turn just slightly.
You're allowed to speak to everybody on this one.
Very good. And hopefully, everybody can hear me okay. I tend to project a bit, so. I wanted to give you an update. I had hoped I might even be coming with a draft plan in hand tonight. I'm still a few days away from that, so I don't have that for you. But I wanted to give you, and by benefit of being here, everybody, an update and, and let you know where we're at and kind of how, what we're seeing coming out of this process. We went into this with some pretty distinct things to look at. We were looking to update that 2003 urban growth area plan for Belfair, and that plan laid out the vision for Belfair, the land use, the recreational and utilities vision for it, and transportation, how transportation was going to serve all of that. The, the work that we're doing is just to refresh the transportation part of it, and I really want to stress that because we're not tasked with rethinking land use or anything. We're working from that 2003 land use plan. And so that plan has distinct places for commercial development, residential. It envisions a lot of future growth up on the plateau, up above town, and then connections between up there and downtown to make sure that the community functions as a whole community and not as two separate places that are connected by name only. So we've had that in the back of our mind. We also know going into this that the Belfair bypass slash SR3 freight corridor is funded, and that work is going to get underway within this next year. And, and I might be able to answer some questions about that if they pop up. But what I can say about it is that the DOT is, has a, envisions coming in with a full-blown process to sort of do what they call a scoping process, and they're going to, they do not have, while there is an approved environmental assessment, according to the DOT, the alignment is not confirmed yet, the endpoints are not confirmed. All of that is going to be determined coming up. So we had kind of a moving target out there to, to deal with in terms of the Belfair bypass because we know that that's going to happen, but we, there are a lot of unanswered questions about that. So we come in, we know the land use, we, we know that that big project's coming in, and then being the kind of planners we are, we, we take a look at existing conditions, and we're very aware of this, the economic corridor that SR3 is for all of Mason County. But I think what became really clear to me in this process is how important But I think what became really clear to me in this process is how important where Belfair is important, not just in terms of Mason County, but also in terms of the overall big region. This SR3 corridor is really important. You have a really important intermodal freight transfer facility up there at the north end of town, and this area is just part of this west-sound economic engine that became really apparent to me as we were looking at the growth pressures on the area and where that growth is going to come from. So the analysis that we looked at, we were looking at how can we connect the existing town to the Belfair bypass, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit more, the Belfair bypass/SR3 freight corridor, I'm still getting my language right. Are there any ways to improve street connectivity within the existing town itself, because that would help take pressure off of some of our key choke points? How can we make bicycle and pedestrian travel safer and more convenient in Belfair? An important priority that has come up time and again through the public process. How can we improve how certain intersections operate today, the operational efficiency? And then, what needs to be done to help, the shorthand term I use for it is bypass-proof Belfair's economy? I know myself, I came into this very concerned that when this freight corridor goes in, the bypass freight corridor, it could draw too much traffic out of Belfair, and the only thing worse than having too much traffic is not having enough traffic, you know? And so how do we make sure that that economy stays strong going forward? So the analysis that we looked at, we used an array of tools, starting with community engagement, existing plans and studies, we used GIS, geographical information systems, and engineering software tools to try to factor in as best as we could the terrain and the environmental constraints, the wetlands, the streams, the major recharge areas. We worked really hard to come up with options that, just like the 2003 plan, are going to take a stretch to accomplish, but they're doable. Our commitment to you all is to not put pie-in-the-sky ideas out there. We think that that's sort of a violation of the public trust, and so we don't have $50 million bridges, you know, connecting across ravines and all. And one of the things that was really a challenge as we looked at the constraints out here is the way the glaciers gouged this area. You have some very steep terrain out here, you don't need me to tell you that, and you also have a lot of wetlands. And so as we work to work around those things, we, and then we looked at financial realities, and knowing that this is part of a perpetual plan and it'll probably be updated again in another 10 or 15 years, we said the highest priority bicycle pedestrian focus is probably between the hub and then the little commercial core. Finishing out the sidewalk opportunities in there, and then within that triangle that's bounded by SR3, SR300 and Clifton Lane, that's going to be your biggest bang for the buck in terms of local pedestrian access. We heard a lot about connecting from that area out to Belfair State Park. And so we tapped into the Hood Canal Discovery Trail concept that had come up through the community, and that will get you the back way into the Thiller Wetland Complex, but we're thinking the recommendations are going to also include a wide shoulder from where that dives into the wetland complex and that trail system, a wide shoulder the rest of the way into town because that trail doesn't come all the way in, and that's a reasonable stretch if we can get DOT approval. But that's, we probably heard more than just about anything else, the importance of connecting Belfair State Park to town because of the important economic opportunities that come with the tourism traffic out there, holidays and summer season, that's a real priority connection. As is completing SR3, the Phase 2 of the SR3 improvements down to 106. Also, more effectively integrating trails into our thinking about transportation and mobility. The 2003 plan has quite extensive information on trails, and this, trails are one of those funny things where depending upon who you're talking to, it's either a transportation facility or it's a recreation facility, and I think it actually really straddles both of those really well. So in a lot of regards, bringing the trails system into transportation is more of a fixing the comp plan and the six-year tip and those types of governing documents, because a lot of the ideas are already there, and a lot of them can be privately funded as development occurs, but given your terrain out there, you have a potential to connect neighborhoods and to connect neighborhoods to commercial areas more cost-effectively and promote active travel and biking and walking, then you're going to be able to put roads in in places. We looked at a lot of options to try to create more street connections, and in the low area where Belfair is already developed, it is really challenging. We looked at trying to get from Newkirk over to SR3. That one came in at about nine, I'm sorry, eight and a half million dollars plus getting over the railroad, plus either upgrading Log Yard Road or building a new connection. Even if the money were not an object, you have parts of Newkirk Road that are today about 18 percent. That's really steep. The footprint to bring that to a more level grade, like 10 percent, is, it would create a very large footprint, and we're not sure that the community is going to be accepting of the kind of footprint that's going to be required to regrade that. We also looked at Roy Bode Road. We know, we were watching traffic, we know that people are using the MTA park-and-ride lot and coming up and around and coming in behind the buildings there to get up to SR3, and so we looked at, well, could you formalize a connection there and take some of the pressure off of Clifton Road and SR3? Where the signal is, if we had more access points, that would be really helpful. Again, what we found was price tag aside, and the price tags are big with any connections from Roy Bode up to SR3, and you might lose a business or two in there as well. Again, what we found were really huge footprints because we can't really defend building bridges through there. That would be even more expensive. To try to do it with cut and fill, we're going to present those ideas in the plan, but we're reluctant to say that they are necessarily what you want to do even if money were no object because it could really change the character of that built environment in that area and make it feel like, not like a local connection to SR3, but a very imposing, wide-banked footprint that you would lose, you couldn't do commercial development on, and you'd have a lot of environmental mitigation. So we really struggled with that, and it really underscores why we are saying in terms of the plateau and developing east of SR3, it's really important that our street standards are tight and that our connected street policies are tight because there you have a chance to build it because it's undeveloped. You have a chance to build it right from the start as opposed to the retrofit that is so costly and sort of out of character, I think, with the scale of the community of trying to build some of these street connections where it's already developed and very fragile environment in there. So look for probably unsatisfying to some people, not a lot of strong recommendations for how to connect within that existing area, but strong recommendations for what gets built up above that it's got really good connectivity in there. So when we talk about the plateau, that is where the intersection with the Belfair bypass, the SR3 freight corridor comes in. Several questions came up, people commented, people felt strongly either that there should be connections between that new corridor and downtown, or there should not be connections between those two corridors. And the arguments against the connections is a concern that, well, if you allow connections up there, isn't that just going to reduce the free-flow capacity? And yes, it will, but without those connections up there, you miss some route redundancy. If there's a crash on SR3, those connections allow alternate routes around those crashes. And I heard about that also, not just from emergency response, but also the PUD, which I hadn't really thought about it, but when there are weather incidents out there and one part of the system gets shut down, they can't get their trucks out there to fix things without some more route redundancies. So there are good reasons to have those connections. We don't think that the impacts on mobility are going to be threatening. We also heard concern that, well, if you allow development on the bypass freight corridor, that's going to hurt downtown. Everything we've heard to date is that this is going to be a limited-access highway, and what that means is that there won't be development. There won't be driveways on the new corridor, there'll be a maximum of two street connections on the corridor. So we look at that, and we don't see that that's going to suddenly pull all the development up there. Your commercial core is really strong, and the traffic that's coming through Belfair from the Tuhia Peninsula, coming in off of 300 or coming in from Old Belfair Highway, that is probably not going to find this new route, an attractive route to take. It is going to continue to come through your commercial area. It's really more about the development that occurs up there, frankly, where you've got some of the greatest development potential because it's flatter, drier, you don't have the steep ravines. It'll allow that development to actually access commercial businesses in downtown. So we think that those connections are really important. They were challenging, though. We looked at terrain, we, you know, we looked at the steep slopes, the wetlands, we worked to avoid going through neighborhoods and houses, and we started, we ended up with about eight options, then brought it down to five, and then we're really, we're just sending two forward for consideration. Probably not a surprise to anybody who came to the public meeting in April. One of them is Romance Hill connection to the new corridor, and the other, what we're putting forward, and this is just, but one idea, is a Log Yard Road connection. And let me talk about both of those. The Romance Hill connection to the connector probably generated the second-most number of comments after creating a link between the Belfair State Park and downtown. People have a lot of thoughts about it, and as a community, there's some divided opinion. Those who are opposed to it say it's a residential street and it's very steep, but it's two-thirds of the way built. It was built with the intent, one day, of connecting to that corridor, and assuming there can be, assuming we get approval from the Navy for an at-grade crossing, it is the most cost-effective connection, the least expensive connection, coming in at about 1.1 million with our preliminary estimates. So those are, you know, points for it and against it, and so that's the one option that's on the table. The other option that's on the table is a connection at Log Yard Road over to the new corridor. We put that forward because the DOT is still not sure where its endpoint's going to go. If the DOT endpoint comes in at Log Yard Road, obviously, this one goes away. But in the 2013 environmental assessment, they showed it going in up towards Lake Flora, up at Lake Flora. And so what this would do is provide a four-way intersection at Log Yard Road that goes out to the new corridor. That is where Mason Transit has its park-and-ride going in. We got a lot of comments about Mason Transit's park-and-ride, and people concerned that it seems sort of backwards, cart before the horse. We're putting the park-and-ride and the intersection improvement in before we quite know what Log Yard Road is actually going to be on that side of the highway. It is unsatisfying, but that is the way the money works. Mason Transit has a grant to do this work, and I know that people are sort of frustrated, like, why would that go in now? But that is unfortunately in the transportation world. Sometimes the monies don't work the way you'd like them to in a more rational world. The, so Log Yard Road, a benefit of a Log Yard Road connection there is that your intermodal freight transfer facility at the north end of town is actually a very active and vibrant business, and they're creating good jobs in there. They're going to be bringing more and more trucks in. They're coming out the Highway 16 corridor as I-5 congestion mounts, as ports of Tacoma and ports of Seattle get hard for trucks to get in and out. They're able to come out here in less time with less delay, which, for the private sector, delay is money. What an intermodal freight transfer facility is, and there aren't very many of them in the state, it's a place where you can drive right up to, you know, transfer things from truck to train or from train to truck. It's an agreement that's in place with the operators of the Puget Sound and Pacific Railroad and the Navy Railroad, and we expect to see more growth happening there, and so if you could pull those trucks off of SR3 with this freight corridor, that that could be beneficial for mobility through Belfair. So those are some of the factors that came into play for us as we looked at things. We look, we see a lot of growth pressure coming out the Highway 16 corridor. We're comfortable saying, and, you know, this is how we read the tea leaves, nobody knows exactly what the future holds, but as we read the tea leaves, what we see is that today there's this very strong economic relationship between Belfair and Bremerton out the SR3 corridor, and I was a little surprised at this, the strong relationship already between Belfair and Port Orchard. We expect in the future there's going to be even more of a relationship between Belfair and the Port Orchard Highway 16 corridor as land prices on I-5 go up, traffic congestion on I-5 goes up. We're already seeing Gig Harbor has already sort of, they're sort of really buckling down to deal with all the growth that they're dealing with. Port Orchard is ramping up, the new high-speed passenger-only ferries going in, and you can get from Belfair to the Highway 16 corridor. It's a shorter distance in less time than it takes to get from here to Bremerton. So we just think in the future, this SR3 Bremerton corridor is going to remain a really important economic line, but as we're thinking far into the future, maybe not even very far in the future, we think that you're going to start seeing a lot more growth coming in from the Highway 16 corridor, and that is something that, again, sort of shaped our thinking when we looked at where to connect the new corridor with SR3. Now, I want to take just a minute to talk about how we look at those splits of traffic. There was, at the open house in April, we had a display that talked about this little what we call origin and destination study, this technique of trying to figure out of all these roads coming into Belfair and out of Belfair, where is traffic coming from and going to? And we needed that to help say, okay, well, if the bypass, the freight corridor is over here, how attractive would a connection between SR3 and the corridor really be? Well, that depends a lot upon the traffic coming through Belfair, where it's coming from and going to. And so the DOT had done some studies about 10 years ago, a little longer than that, that estimated that if the bypass went in where it's shown in their environmental assessment, it would probably pull about 20 percent of the traffic off of SR3. And so we wanted to know, is that still true? Does that have things changed radically in the last 10 or 12 years? And so we conducted, we didn't conduct, we had conducted, an origin and destination survey whereby what they did, and this particular study, because we just, this was a very high-level clip, we wanted to sample the traffic, and they used Wi-Fi technology. Now, I'm old enough to go like, well, Wi-Fi technology, why didn't they use Bluetooth technology? And Wi-Fi technology, I was not aware of this, but more and more car manufacturers are putting, they're building into cars, Wi-Fi hotspots. I had no idea, but they are. And so that's what this technology does, is pings those Wi-Fi signals, and every signal has a unique identifier, and so we could see, okay, this much of these cars coming southbound on SR3, how many of them sort of stayed in the Belfair area for a while, how many went out SR300, how many went out 106, how many were still on SR3 south of 106, and you could do that for each of the routes. And that's, and so we used that, and we said, well, you know, we don't think that the DOT numbers are that far off. We bumped it up a little bit. We're thinking maybe 24 to 25 percent diversion, and so you might say, well, why would that be so low? Why wouldn't the numbers be higher? In part, that's because all the traffic coming in from SR300 and the Old Belfair Highway In part, that's because all the traffic coming in from SR300 and the Old Belfair Highway, that's not gonna go south to get onto the Belfair bypass. It's, it's too far, the wrong direction. We think that maybe some of the traffic coming in, um, from the South Shore, um, might be willing to go a mile and a half the wrong way to get on the new route to go north. Where that southern endpoint ends up being is really important. That is really gonna make a big difference. Um, so, so when we look at that, we see like, okay, not very much of the South Shore traffic's gonna go that way. None of the SR300 or Old Belfer Highway traffic is gonna go that way. And it probably won't even make a lot of sense for it to say, go pick up Romance Hill and take that route up and over and then, and then head north. It's, um, it might be more attractive southbound in the evening, but, uh, we just don't, we're looking at the numbers and just, and looking at human behavior and we're not always logical, rational creatures. And we really don't like to go the wrong way in order to go the right way. So, so that is, um, some of the thinking, why, um, we, um, at this point, assuming the southern terminus is closer to the SR302 intersection, why we think it will pull 24, 25% of the traffic off of SR3. Anybody heading northbound, coming up through Allen in the morning? If, if they're not making any stops, they are probably gonna find that, that alternate route to be a better route. But, if you, if you're dropping a kid off at high school or elementary school, if you're doing errands on your way through town, um, the, all, any of those things are reasons why, you know, if you gotta run into the Rite Aid or whatever, any of those are reasons why people would not take that alternate route. Because none of those services, you won't be able to do those things on that alternate route. So, um, and I, I think that's really counterintuitive for people. There was a lot of, we got some pushback from people saying, it's gonna take a lot more traffic off of SR3. It may, we're just not seeing it ourselves. So, um, but I wanted to, to speak to that because we had a display on it at the open house. Um, shortly after that, we got a call from the Kitsap Sun to follow up and ask some more details. And then, some long period of time after that, there was the article in the paper. And I think it might've made people think that we went out and did a new study and it was just following up on the materials that we had, um, at the open house in, in April. So, um, so these are, uh, some of the recommendations that are gonna be in the plan. We've heard a lot about intersection operations in town. I will tell you that, um, some of the things that we've heard, we're not seeing play out in the real world. And we've actually spent a little bit of time, like, trying to study these intersections and watch actual traffic behavior. So, like, this evening, I came into town a little early to watch some of the traffic behavior. We've heard that traffic will back up on SR3 northbound with people trying to turn left at SR300. And we've heard that that should be restricted to right in, right out, um, especially during the peak periods. It has its own turn lane, the left turn movement there has its own turn lane. And we have yet to see evidence that people trying to turn left there are slowing down the, you know, the through traffic. So, we, we haven't observed that. We have observed what happens at the SR3 Clifton Lane intersection, where, um, that intersection, um, sometimes gets gummed up by driver behavior on Clifton. Either people trying to turn left out of the Safeway and just getting so desperate, they just sort of pull on out, 'cause I'm gonna get in there. And I've watched this happen and they've blocked the traffic. So, when cars are turning right there, they, there's nowhere for them to go because somebody has pulled out far enough that they've blocked that traffic. Or, somebody has turned and, you know, the cars are all queued up waiting for their green light and there's not a gap and they, somebody stops 'cause they wanna turn left into the, the Taco Time or Taco Bell there and Taco, Taco Bell. And then, suddenly, and I've watched this, traffic can't come off of SR3 and it gums up that intersection. So, what we're recommending is that, um, in the not-so-distant future, Mason County look at restricting that segment between the main intersection, uh, the four-way intersection, the four-way stop, and the signalized intersection, especially between Roy Bode and the Signal. Restrict that to right in, right out. Um, the only way you can do that is if cars coming out of, say, the Safeway have a way to do a U-turn and come back. And one of the other things that we heard a lot about, both for, two thumbs up and as well as two thumbs down, is to replace that four-way stop-controlled intersection with a roundabout. Um, it'll be, make it s- (laugh) I'm pretty sure the difference is opinion even in this room. But, um, but a single-lane roundabout designed properly will allow traffic to keep moving through there. It'll make it safer and easier for pedestrians to get, say, from the transit center, the transit stop to the hub, or to get from, uh, if you're, if you, the coffee shop to, over to the QFC or whatever. It'll, it'll make pedestrian movement safer. It'll keep cars moving and keep them going safer and it would allow for a U-turn. If you do right in, right out and restrict that left turn movement, but you don't give people a way to do a U-turn, you're now gonna negatively impact the businesses. And, and we, and so, our goal is to make sure anything that's done in here increases access to businesses, it doesn't decrease it. It, it makes it easier and safer for people to get in and out. So, um, so, uh, for those of you who hate roundabouts, I could tell you right now, there's something in the draft plan that you're not going to like at all. Um, but I'll just be the, yeah, I'll do the spoiler right there for you. Um, but that, it, as we've watched that intersection and what we've been told from people and then has we've gone out and experienced it ourselves, and, and I have not done this in peak tourism season, so I can only imagine when you have people coming through here who don't know their way through town and they've got maybe RVs and all that, and then they're trying to figure out a, kind of a complicated four-way stop with all the various lanes and people doing different turn movements. Um, we think that what you would find is, is, uh, is, uh, improve mobility, uh, you can deal with access management, it'll make it safer for pedestrians. And it really gives you an opportunity to create something of a gateway into, like, here is our downtown and this is our gateway into it. And so, you know, you can do something special with those roundabout treatments. So, um, I, I would, um, let me just make sure I hit all my things here. I wanted to, um, tell you, um, I want you all to know that while we are not, um, making recommendations about the new corridor is not in our purg- that's the state's project and they have a process out there. But, some of the things that we've heard, we are forwarding on as recommendations that Mason County might want to put out as a part of that process as it gets started. First of all, what we've heard is that the utility districts, the PUD, the sewer folks, um, water, they wanna be at the table when that scoping process starts because there will be new development up on the plateau. The ability to extend utilities up there, um, is, is, uh, is vitally important to all of those entities. The DOT is gonna acquire a 120-foot right-of-way, but they're only going to build a two-lane facility, for starters. That's because it's a limited access highway and they buy up the right-of-way on both sides of it. The utilities have an opportunity, if they can come to the table at the beginning, to be a part of that process and maybe co-locate their utilities at the same time that the Belfair bypass is being constructed or thought about when, when that right-of-way is acquired. So, they can plan, so that in the future, they can provide the utilities more cost-effectively for the development that's going to occur. Their concern is that they won't be invited to the table until the end of the process, at which point decisions have been made and they can be precluded. So, one of the recommendations is to please invite the utilities to the table upfront and, and have them a part of the process upfront. Uh, we also heard that, um, because even with the bike lanes and all through town, biking through Belfair is not optimal. There, there's a lot of traffic, there are a lot of driveways, there are a lot of turning movements. And we hear that biking, people, the cycling community really loves cycling in Mason County. There's an opportunity for the, for, when that bypass route goes in, when that alternate route goes in, to take what's going to be, because it's a freight corridor, to take the bike lane that's associated with that. The state doesn't build anything without putting shoulders on it for bike lanes. To move that and separate that so that cyclists have a, a route around with connections down into town, but that's not right on the shoulder of the road, that's separated. So, there's a grassy strip. And that could also serve as a utility access road, if all this is planned together upfront. Um, because if it's sewer or water, power, they do need to be able to get trucks out there every so often, so, but not very frequently. And so, you could co-locate the bike facility and the utility corridor together and, and sort of have a win-win-win all around for everybody. Um, I would also say that, um, in terms of the connectors, that get between the new corridor and downtown, it's really important that those are built as four-way intersections because if they're not, you've basically isolated a part of your urban growth area that you can't get to until someday, somebody builds in from Pierce County or Kitsap County from the other side. So, it's, uh, the, right now, that new route is, if, based on the 2013 EA, it's gonna kind of slice right through the middle of that. If those, if those connector points don't allow access to the other side, then a big part, the, perhaps the most, some of the most developable land in all of Belfair, because it's flat up there, is, is not accessible. And so, it's really important that that's taken into consideration, so you're not losing part of your urban growth area where you're intending to accommodate your future residential and commercial development. And then, just, again, we encourage you, look at SR3 and look at the SR16 corridor and make sure that you're, you're, you feel really good about your street standards and your development standards, 'cause it sure looks like there's a lot of growth getting ready to come right out that Highway sixteen corridor. And it looks like when your, um, freight corridor gets constructed, it's gonna open up access to some of the most developable parts of, of Belfair. So, um, so those are sort of high-level summaries of the recommendations. Again, I'm sorry, I don't have a draft plan per se to hand to you, but I welcome any questions that you might have.
You wanna go first?
Mine. This is just a process question and maybe this is for Dave. So, at this point, once the plan is, is submitted, is there some sort of process then for review from a citizen body or something for adoption into the Belfair comp plan or how, what, what, what goes on from here?
Well, when we, we're gonna submit a draft to Public Works, I'm, I'm hoping by this Friday. And then, I, 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 Loretta's right now breaking out in a rash because she's like, oh, here's a question we didn't think about ahead of time. Uh, I don't know exactly what the review process is that they intend to do for that, but it'll get worked through with you. I don't know whether it's with the PAC or the TICAP or how, how that review process is intended to be done. I don't believe that there was an intent for like a big public meeting about it, but if that needs to be discussed, we can discuss that. Then we'll make any revisions that are needed to be made and then it's brought to you for your approval. It becomes part of that, it becomes part of that 2003 urban growth area plan. It just replaces, it becomes like an addendum to it, the transportation update of that.
Sure.
I just look forward to seeing the final plan when it comes out. Thank you.
Yeah.
There, I have a few, uh, questions, uh, on the, on the checking by Wi-Fi. One of the things that I understood is that it occurred in October. Why October instead of August?
Uh, we were just getting started. Um, I mean, we, we didn't really know, I mean, we were just getting off the ground in August. We wanted to wait until after all the construction was done because that wouldn't make any sense to do it then. Um, and, and, and we did do a seven-day, so we, we picked up a weekend as well, so we did a seven-day week. And we got about a 10% sample. And, um, I, I am confident that your summer traffic looks different than your winter traffic.
Confident.
But, the, um, the commute patterns that seem to really gripe people and espec- and then those evening, you know, commute compounded with tourists coming in, we think what that's, it's just gonna exacerbate that a little bit more. But, what we would think is a lot of your tourism traffic is headed out to the Tohia Peninsula. So, probably showing even less, um, uh, you know, sort of through, staying on SR3 all the way through, we, we don't even imagine that your Belfair State Park and your resource lands and recreational lands out there are big draws. Not having been through a whole season of this yet.
So, the Tohia Peninsula and not 106? I mean, what about the vacationers? What about the weekend traffic? The weekenders, with second homes?
Yeah, 106, and so, the 106 and 300 both, I think, picked that up. I, I mean, and so, how radically different the summer looks from the fall. I mean, it, the, the survey we did was not terribly expensive. We, we expect that the DOT is going to do, I mean, it's been, the data for the area is kind of long in the tooth. And so, we're expecting that there's gonna be a comprehensive data collection process going in. We didn't have the budget to do their data collection. We were just trying to revalidate their assumptions about the splits was what we were trying to do.
Okay, 'cause one thing I can assure you, even during the summer, is there's a lot of trailer, uh, traffic that go on past. I know, 'cause I'm behind them.
Yeah.[1527.32][1527.32](laughing).
Um, also, just, I wanted to point something out to you, the, the folks at that last meeting, when they talked to you about, uh, where they mentioned about Highway three and the, and the turning, uh, or Highway, Highway three and 300, what they meant was the traffic coming off of 300 onto three. And because of that, they're making rights and lefts there, both. Uh, that's where the people, I had never even thought about it, I've suffered from it, but I'd never thought about it until somebody mentioned, actually, Chris Klussman mentioned it at that meeting. I started thinking, wow, and I've been watching it ever since. You have the same issue that occurs on Belfair Street.
Yeah.
So, it's actually, it, it, because we are really nice, we actually are. We create a lot of that. I didn't realize it.
Yeah, and, and what I, what I've observed, I haven't seen more than two cars at a time queued up to turn left off of 300 onto three. One of the things that I did observe though, I thought you were gonna say this, I don't know if I've ever been in a community where, when it's so congested, where people, you all know how to do the zipper merge here. I mean, people, they, they sort of, they stop and they let the next car in and, you know, I don't know if they do that all the time, but at least in my experience, I, I, the only other community I've seen do that is Yelm.
We just got off of a, a construction period. It's called survival and we'd probably killed each other if we didn't learn to do it. But, uh, the next one, uh, the last question I have for you is, you said you had looked at the Roy Bode Road Connector. Did you look at it as a two-way or a one-way though?
Well, we looked at, so we looked at, um, a variety of options. We looked at, um, we looked at a, I think this might've been your suggestion, a southbound one-way off-lane, um, after you go through the trestle, that would come off of SR3 and, um, uh, go drop down into the valley and, and connect to Roy Bode down there and then maybe be two-way down there. It can be built. It would be almost all on structure. It would be extremely expensive. So, we sort of, once we saw how much structure, once we get up into the multiple tens of millions, um, we didn't look at that one any further. Um, I mean, we, we looked to try to see, could you connect, you know, give people a one-way off, uh, you know, and then get them back on somewhere different down below. The, the ones that I was referring to were actually, uh, trying to come in up around Coquitlambe Lane, just to spread out the, uh, so coming up sort of behind, uh, well, one of them would take out a car wash.
Yeah.
Um, and so, you know, what would it, what would it, could we spread the access points to SR3 and take the pressure off of Clifton at three? And it can work and it would be helpful. It's just remarkably expensive and again, with a very large footprint. We could not do cut and fill coming down off of SR3 though. That all had to be on structure, 'cause it's so steep through there.
I look forward to looking at that, 'cause the one directly after the, the, uh, trestle though, I drove that for many, for 20 years, going down to my place I used to own down there.
Yeah.
So, it was very accessible, but that's just somebody driving their car.
Right.
One, you know, driveways and stuff, but...
Yeah. Was it pretty, it had to have been very, very steep?
No, not at all. Goes down a little bit and then over, then down a little bit, then over.
Oh, interesting. Well, well, uh, well, you'll, you'll get a chance to see it.
Only problem is now you'd probably have to take out a house that wasn't there and...
Yeah, and we do try to stay away from those.
Uh, public. Mary?
Um, I apologize for my phone speaking, but, uh, I was wondering, I wanted to look up the name of the street, Alder Creek Lane. Um, and I'm wondering why there can't be a connector at that point? Um, you know, 'cause it's on the south end of Belfair.
Yeah. We looked at, um, we looked at a couple of options, um, and we looked at Alder Creek Lane. We also looked at, um, the road that accesses the Eagles Hall. Um, and as you get up there, you've got some really steep ravines that are gonna require bridges. Um, even, I mean, just, and that's not even counting getting, getting approval from the Navy to do an at-grade there. Um, it's, there, there's some really...
Worse than Romance Hill Road?
Yeah, Romance Hill, um, you've got, I mean, again, Romance Hill, from, from what you're, what you'd be building now is pretty straightforward. It's just, you know, it's just getting... It's just, you know, it's just getting over the railroad tracks. Down there, you, you're building some new road that doesn't exist. And so we, we tried to, we tried to follow ridge lines where we could to avoid some of the really steep. We tried to, we limited ourselves to nothing steeper than 10%. And so that's either a long circuitous route in places, or a lot of cut and fill, which the cut and fill is expensive. In part, one of the things we learned is by looking at the soil types here, a lot of the soils that you would cut from here, they're not suitable for using for fill over there. So you'd be cutting dirt out and taking it away, and then bringing new dirt in. And then, even then, we were still looking at within, you know, for the environmental impacts in some areas, like still needing to do some bridging. And bridges are really, really expensive, so.
But I, I do have a follow-up on this, too. When you did the Wi-Fi, whatever that's called, and you were apparently watching what was built into new vehicles, were you tracking the vehicles only on SR3, or were you tracking them on the old Belfair Highway as well?
We, we had, it's, I don't wanna geek out on people, but I'll call it a CORDON study. So we put cordons at certain places. One was on Old Belfair Highway, another one was SR300 south of town, another one was 106, SR3 south of, or east of 106, and then SR3 north of town here.
But it would only been new cars. You weren't tracking all the, all of our old cars.
Right, no, and, and you're right, and all it was, was a sample. We got about 10%. And when we looked at it, what we said was, we don't, how do I say this respectfully? If a certain part of the community, let's, this is not the case, but if the Tohuya Peninsula were the low-income community, then we'd say, well, maybe we were biased against them because maybe nobody out there has newer cars. But we figured that the, the ownership of cars, you know, it's, you know, traveling through here, there are a lot of old cars, there are a lot of new cars. And they've been doing this since about 2011, 2012. I was really surprised. GM has been doing this with their OnStar system. Just so everybody knows, for like five bucks a month, you can get a Wi-Fi hotspot in your car, and then all of your devices can run off of that. That was my, like, lesson out of this. I had no idea how that all works. But, and so, so anyhow, you, what you get is a representative sample. And, and that was enough to help us look at traffic volumes and have a clear enough understanding that the DOT numbers are probably not too far off. I think there's a little bit more growth coming up, you know, traffic coming up the SR3 corridor than they might have envisioned originally. But if you think about it, growth management has, we're not seeing big, huge developments going in in the rural areas anymore. So most of our growth is taking place in Allen and in Shelton and Belfair. And so we're not, you know, so when, when we looked at it, it's like, okay, it's, where we're seeing the, the increase, it makes sense for it to be on the SR3 corridor and not out on the peninsula or, or South Shore. Now, if they bring that southern terminus over, and this might get closer to your Alder Creek answer, for Mason County to build a connection through there, that would be quite a stretch. Let's just say that. But if by chance, the, the freight corridor, if that terminus comes closer to Belfair, it will be a more attractive route for, especially for the South Shore folks. And then we're also looking at Razor Road, how Razor Road can be connected up there, and then how can Razor Road connect to SR3. And so one option, well, we're looking at several options, going into Allen, connecting through Allen and Lakeland Village. We're also looking at coming into SR3 in the vicinity of the trestle and the school. And we're also looking at options, are there other ways of getting from up there down to 106? So if, I mean, there are a lot of ifs. But if the, if the new route, if the new alternate route corridor, if that southern terminus is closer to the high school than 302, closer to 106 than 302, and it, especially if Razor Road can connect to SR3 there, then I think you could see a little bit more traffic relief on SR3 through town. But there are a lot of ifs.
One, one more. They, we moved on to Old Belfair Highway in 1999. And I used to be able to walk up and down Old Belfair Highway safely. The traffic is now so bad on that road, especially at certain times of the day, that it is a dangerous road. I don't think, once people figure this out, it's become another way to get to Belfair. And that's not gonna change, no matter what you do, you're in SR3.
I totally agree. It, it's an old historic route, and you're right. The, the, the construction caused people to look for alternate routes. And I don't have an easy answer for you. I, I think that there are things that can be done to soften the impacts of that.
Speed limit 25 miles an hour.
And, and enforcement, otherwise, you know, it doesn't make any sense. But, but you're right. I, I'd love to tell you that when the new alternate corridor goes out, the alter, the new route corridor goes in, that it'll suddenly be a magnet, and it'll pull up. I don't think it will. I don't think it will. I mean, it's, this is our future. And if there's consolation, I think, it's that you're not gonna be looking at a lot more growth out on Old Belfair Highway. That's not where the growth is supposed to occur. Future growth is gonna be on the SR3 corridor or up on the plateau here. So future growth should not be impacting you, but you're right. You, you have traffic that you didn't used to have.
Sarah, did you have a, a number of cars that you counted? I was looking at margin of errors. Do you have a, a count?
I, I wanna say it was about 15,000 or 16,000. I don't have it with me, but I, I can get you the, the actual numbers and the splits.
That were in the count?
Yeah. One of the things that really jumped out at me was how much traffic stops in Belfair. And that, I mean, in, in high, all of this makes sense in hindsight. I mean, Belfair came to me, it's at the crossroads. It's a, it's an important crossroads community. And, and, and that's where your commercial center is. And I was pleasantly surprised at how much traffic comes in and stops for a period of time, long enough that it's like they weren't just getting gas and leaving. So going to grocery stores and all. We did a, one of our mini polls that we put out. We asked the public, when you come into town, where do you go? And how often do you stay? And do you go to one destination or multiple destinations? And one of the things we found from that poll, which sort of fits with all of this, is that when people come into town, they usually are going to two or more destinations. So it might be gas and coffee, or it might be groceries and drugstore, or whatever it is. But people are making multiple stops in there. And that's why we think that if you can improve, 'cause everything's so close right there, if you can improve the pedestrian connectivity and make it like a little town center a little bit more, then it's possible people could park once, do whatever they're gonna do, drop it in the car, and then walk over and do their other business, and then get in the car and go, instead of adding to the congestion of the car going from here and going 600 feet to go over there.
Thank you. Any last questions? Yes, well.
Very interesting. When you track your vehicles by Wi-Fi, did you say that's only 10% of what, of the total traffic?
We captured about 10% of the.
And then what was the timeframe on this? Was this just peak traffic?
No, we did a seven-day, it was a 24, this is a really nice part about tracking things like Wi-Fi or Bluetooth, is they put these devices on telephone poles or something, and, and then they, they, they're constantly running. So it was a 24/7 for seven days. So that's, that's what they were capturing. It doesn't, for us, it didn't seem to make a lot of sense to try to break it out by specific time periods because we were just trying to get a sense of where is the, the, what are the general patterns? If we were, if, if we were doing a different type of a study, and we were going to go do all the data collection and build a, a traffic analysis model for Mason County sufficient to do analysis for the, the new route corridor, we would probably wanna get a bigger sample size. We would want more detailed information. We'd wanna get a sample size big enough that allows us to break it off into individual chunks of time. There's a, the, the data for this area is pretty old, and we didn't want to imply, to be precisely wrong, instead of generally right. So it makes, at a certain point, it just made sense to like, let's do this sample. Let's get a sense of where the traffic is, you know, how, how much of traffic coming down SR3 is staying on SR3 versus peeling off and, and taking one of these other routes. And I think had it been radically different than what the DOT had seen when they first did their analysis 10 or 15 years ago, we might have, it might have raised flags for us. We would have gone back and said, let's, let's go find some other ways of sampling. But it, it was, it was surprisingly close to what they had come up with themselves when they did a more detailed sample.
Your survey did, if it went on a 24-hour basis, you did get the people that come to town early in the day.
Yes, yeah, oh, yeah.
They don't shop in town after 4:00.
Right, yeah, they come in early and they, they get, they come back through early, too.
Yeah, and so far the synopsis that I'm getting from you is that the bypass or the alternate freight movement, whatever we're gonna call it, is not going to kill Belfair.
It's not gonna kill Belfair.
Sounds like it's gonna make it stronger.
I feel like it's gonna make it stronger. I, I will be really candid to you and say that when I came to this project, I was really concerned about downtown Belfair, being able to survive that. But as we looked at how much traffic is coming in that's not going to be attracted to this alternate route because it's just not in the right place for them, we don't see that changing. We don't, like, the old Belfair Highway traffic, we don't see that change. We see people continuing to come in from the Tohuya Peninsula. The other thing that was really impressive to us is how concerted the downtown revitalization effort is, or not, I don't even call it revitalization. The, there's such a strong civic organization down there. Like, there's a beautification committee underway, they're working on benches and wayfinding signs. I mean, we were thinking, we were the fancy, the high-paid consultants from Lacy were gonna tell you, you need to have like, you know, thematic wayfinding signs and things to make the town pop. They're already working on that. They're already, there are people in town already, in the business community, trying to get the, the things in place that are gonna be necessary to keep, not, 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 not just help downtown Belfair survive, but really thrive. So we, we're actually feeling very confident. If anything, it's our recommendations are to continue to collaborate and work with this group. Don't, don't get it cross-purpose. There's something very powerful about community-driven initiatives. And that's what we found when we started looking at that as a strong initiative.
You may not have this information, but the Phase 2 of the, of the highway development here, is that scheduled at all?
No, it's not scheduled, it's not funded. It's not funded. So we will, that will be an important priority in the plan, is to finish that out. And, and I, this is the power of a plan. The fact that the community identified that in 2003 helped to elevate it and make it a state funding priority. So by putting Phase, Phase 2 in, it's like, great, we can say we've done Phase 1, but here's Phase 2. It, it allows legislators to point to a plan and say, see, it's in here. So I need your support, you know, capital budget to do that.
In the survey, did you have any comments about the timing of the light down here at 106?
We, we've gotten comments about the timing at 106. And I have to say, I, I, it's, it's a DOT thing, and so that's one of the things we're flagging. I don't know that we're the ones to tell you what the right timing should be out there. I mean, we, we can do that kind of work and do that, but that wasn't part of this plan. One of the things that I've seen is, is, again, as we watch the traffic and all, I mean, what, so here's the thing that happens with that light, is, it's, it's traffic signals everywhere. You have to stop the flow of traffic on the main line to let, and so you, signals actually sort of create friction where you don't want it, but you need to, to let the other traffic pass through. And so both in terms of left-turn movements, you know, northbound left turn onto 106 as well as coming off of 106 and turning left onto SR3, we've, we've watched that movement. We've watched what it does to traffic. We've also watched the pedestrian crossing protection at the elementary school. And even today, I was watching that. There's so much congestion on SR, it's not like if things were free-flowing and then though somebody pushes the pedestrian crosswalk and that creates the congestion. It's already congested. It's that extra little bit of friction that sort of seems to put it over the top. And that's why we would say, even if you can only, only pull 20 or 25% of the traffic off of SR3, it's, 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 it's that little increment around the edge that breaks it and makes it not function. You can generate remarkable benefit just by taking a little bit of traffic off. It's sometimes surprising, there's sort of a nonlinear function there. But that signal timing, I'm, I, I think it's problematic. I, me, personally, I'm gonna, just see if I can elicit a groan here. I sometimes wonder if a roundabout could work. I, you know, I'd have to look at the left-turn movements going on, both from 106 to 3 and from 3 to 106. But that's the kind of a thing where it just keeps everybody moving.
That is a big problem with traffic backup in courts on weekends.
Yeah.
Or even weekdays, it's common that traffic will, will back up almost to the airport. It did back up this weekend.
And Sarah, it, it originally was supposed to be a roundabout. Thank you very much for coming in today and speaking with us.
Yeah, no, this has, it's really been a fun topic to work on. Thank you.
Thanks for, thanks for cutting questions off. Otherwise, the more questions we ask, the more roundabouts we get.
Okay, next up is our public benefit rating system, Marissa Watson.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm actually subbing for Dave Wyndham tonight. I believe we put this on the agenda when we thought we'd have a finished product from the planning commission. But I was just gonna give an update of what we did at our last PAC meeting on the 21st. So, on Monday, the 21st, the PAC took public comment for about an hour. And then the PAC answered those questions as best as possible, and also addressed that as they delved into the draft as well, they would answer some of those questions that came up during the public comment period. The meeting ran a little past 10, and it was decided by the PAC and staff that they had more in the document that needed to be updated. So the hearing was continued to June 18th, so that one will be coming up here. We have a new planning manager, Kel Rowan. She also agreed that she wanted to take a look at that document and also scrub it against Mason County's current regulations to make, make sure everything matched up. And she will be doing that and hopefully be getting a draft by June 11th to be placed on the web and for the public to look at. So we had public comment for about an hour, like I said, and then took a break. Unfortunately, when we came back, we did have one member from the public that, that stayed, but it was full before that. So the PAC made a lot of progress when they came back, so it's too bad that people didn't stay and kind of hear that. But some of the progress that they did make in the document was updates to the point system, the high priority, medium priority, and low priority. They raised the points up in those categories. They also worked on the public access part. And like James Thomas said earlier, we do realize that some areas, public access is not going to be beneficial in some areas. But we were working on the reduction if public access was allowed. So there's a 10% automatic tax reduction if public access is allowed in some way. The valuation schedule, if people have the document on page 11, was reworked with the points and their assessed value. So our lowest value is now zero to five points. And at that level, you would be paying 100% of the assessed value. The next level is six to nine points, 80% of assessed value. 10 to 19 points, 60% of assessed value. 20 to 29, 40% of assessed value. And then 30-plus points would qualify for the 20% of assessed value. And then our last category on there is if you have the 30-plus points and public access for a 10% of assessed value. So they worked on reworking. So they worked on reworking the points and the valuation schedule. They also worked on the ineligible land section on, I believe it's the page before there, on page 11. As it was mentioned earlier too in our public comment, they did lower the properties less than one acre in size unless otherwise specified herein. And the original said less than five acres, so they also made that change. See, is there anything else? And those were the changes that they made. I don't know, you have any questions?
What was the rationale for the change in acreage allowed?
The one acre?
Yeah.
Some of the points that they made is that if, if someone has a historic site or an archaeological site, such as a water will, for example, five acres, I mean, it's not going to be on a five-acre parcel of land, it's going to be a smaller parcel of land, so.
Commissioner?
Marissa, thanks for pinch hitting tonight for Dave. Appreciate it. We were talking earlier about the letters that were sent to property owners who currently have land in the open space program and comments that your office has been receiving. Are we still going to get to see those comments? Are you still collecting those for our...
We are still collecting them. We collected them and published them on the web to a point. And then what we got after that point was sent to the PAC and then printed for availability at that PAC meeting. We'll continue to gather them and make them available on the web and at the next meeting as well.
Okay, and if you could just provide the commission with...
Yes, I can do that as well.
Yes, question?
Thank you. Now, in fairness, you're the messenger, okay? I understand that. I have a few questions that I'm hoping maybe you can take back to the planning commission as we're doing this.
Yes.
I know Jerry's here, so he will be listening as well, I know. On page 2, Purpose and Intent, item A, it talks about the council wanting to maintain, preserve, and conserve, and I'm just paraphrasing, food, fiber, and forest crops. Again, that goes to resource lands and forest lands. So that's one of the intents. Primary intent, item A, page 2. So when you go to page 3 and you start going through your priorities and your rating systems, it used to be, or it was included at one time, resource and rural ag lands, rural forest lands, and woodlands. Those have now been stricken. That, to me, seems to be in conflict to item A on the previous page. I think that needs to be clarified by the planning commission, so I'm hoping that between the two of you, you will get that information passed on. Because, while that's been stricken and it was talked about as being one of the main points in the purpose and the intent, now the highest rated benefit is public access, public recreation areas, trail linkage, and recreational corridors. So again, it goes back to public access and not necessarily the preservation of our most key and critical resource areas. I just really think that needs to be addressed. Then, the biggest concern is, you can have a sensitive critical area, it can be some of the most critical areas in Mason County, you can only get up to, I think you said it would be maybe a deduction up to 80% of your taxes assessed value, but if you allow public access, you can get a 90% reduction in your tax value. That's great, but where is the insurance? And I do believe that this is your intent. If you buy public access, you need to have a caveat where it's very clearly identified that in future years, by default, this private land cannot be condemned or taken over to eminent domain. I don't think people wanting to preserve their lands want to ultimately end up losing their lands because they were kind enough to have allowed the public on their lands. So if this is your intent for public access, you need to be very, very clear on the long-range outcome.
This is, please, this is not due for questions. Testimony, we give...
I was just hoping you'd take this back to the planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
It'll come into you in a month.
Not yet, please. Are you, are you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay. Now you can ask a question. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to bring the commission's attention to the fact that the RCW actually talks at some length about public access. And that's how that made its way into the original draft of the PDRS. As we've looked at the many problems with public access in everything except trail linkages, for instance, the PAC has moved to minimize public access as a major factor.
Thank you for the clarification. Questions, please? Yes?
Marissa, I was at that meeting and I had to leave. I apologize. Did the PAC discuss the conflict between Kitsap and King Counties' rating system that is proposed with Mason County?
I don't believe that they discussed that afterwards.
Do you have a memory of that?
Not unless I missed it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. The physical realities of both King and Kitsap counties are different than Mason County and...
But you guys did discuss that at that meeting.
We had a brief discussion about it, but...
Okay, thank you. Other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marissa.
You did a great job for standing in for him. And just, you know, to make it clear, we will be available after the meeting and so will our staff. If you don't mind, staff, please stick around to be able to answer any more questions or even take some testimony from some of these folks that may want to have a discussion with us a little further about these issues. With that, is there anything further? All right, no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.
He's the last one for us.
I never do, I never do well on my own.